Oh, yeah.
Welcome. It's good to see you all for the meeting of the Board of Trustees for the Town of Buena Vista. The date is March 12th, 2024. The time is 7:05. Thank you for your patience in waiting for us. Please silence your cell phones. And we are going to resume this meeting at item number seven, which is our consent agenda. And the consent agenda contains our meetings from our minutes from various meetings of advisory boards and committees, as well as appointments of Laura Turp as an alternate member of the Recreation Advisory Board. And then ruling terms for Kelly Collins and Colleen Fitzgerald as voting members and appointing Jennifer Biscia. I don't know if I said that anywhere close to the right thing. But as an alternate member of the Trails Advisory Board. And we'd really like to thank those members of the public for their service on these boards. And we do take seriously the recommendations that come from these committees and advisory boards. So does anybody on the board have any changes that in the consent agenda or any items that they'd like to see discussed as business items? Hearing none, I'd like a motion, please, to approve the consent agenda.
Some of.
We have Lucrezzi and Cobb. All in favor? Anyone opposed? Motion passes. And now we've reached the point in our meeting where we would like to hear from the public in terms of public comment. And if you're speaking for either of the public or any of the public hearings that come later, you can either speak now or later, but if you speak later, it becomes a part of the official record of the public meeting. So I only have one person signed up. And that is Mr. Justin Kirk, who is working for Congresswoman Peterson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As the mayor said, I'm Justin Kirk, working for Congresswoman Brittany Peterson out of the 7th Congressional District as her Regional Director, based out of the Kansas City office. We also have offices in Lakewood, of course, Washington DC. If you should ever be in Kansas City area, feel free to reach out. Happy to host. Ruben, I want to touch on two quick updates. One of them is, well, both of them are great news. One was just, I'm really glad to be able to be here to deliver. And that is that after last week, when Congress passed their partial budget, the rest to be debated going into this weekend and the next probably. And the President then signed the partial budget this weekend, which was a $460 billion price tag on it. $12 million of which are a bit over 12 are funding projects that entities around the district made some submitted requests to Congresswoman's office to get funded. And I'm happy to say that around 10% of those dollars, over $12 million will be coming to the community of Buena Vista. By the way, of the Carbonite Street project that you submitted for a year ago, this month. So the Carbonite Street project funding will go toward the direct modular manufacturing and costs associated with housing units, as well as the capital asset cost, or rather, the capital costs, sorry, the child care building. Housing units will be studio, one bedroom, two bedroom units, serve households earning between 60 and 120% of AMI. And just, you know, down the road, too, there's a project going into Salida. Supporting, the Congresswoman supported the James Place Housing Solar Project. It totals around $300,000 as well. So so congratulations to the community that are on that funding. It's an exciting time. The other bit of information I wanted to share is on the Student Resource Hub launched today on the Congresswoman's website, or peterson.house.gov/students. And again, Peterson is all E's, two T's. Basically pulls together the important resources and information that to assist students and borrowers as they're preparing to go back to school, start paying back their student loans after graduating as well. A portion of the information includes that which came directly from the Department of Education after the Congresswoman and others in the House and Senate, as well as those in the Future Forum Caucus, which she's a part of, sent a letter last September requesting more clarification from the Department of Education for borrowers as student loan payments resume. So again, it's on the Congresswoman's official website, petersonsoutouse.gov/students, and just launched today. So I'm happy to accept any questions. And I didn't time myself on that, but I think I'm well under the three minutes.
Thank you very much for the good news on the $1.2 million grant. That is fantastic, and we sincerely appreciate it.
I will pass it on.
Thanks, Justin.
Thank you all. Thank you. Sorry, last name. I will be departing after this, as I have to drive home. So if you need, if you have any questions now, happy to. Should have made that clarifying point. Thank you all.
Thank you, and thanks for all the attention from the Congresswoman.
I'll do my part as well, and I will pass it on. Thank you.
Okay, that concludes our public comment. So now we will hear from Planning and Zoning. We indicated a preference for us to be able to meet the candidates for appointment to the Planning and Zoning Commission. So this is the first time that we are doing that. So your applications were included in our packet, and we would like to meet the candidates. Is there a Joel?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a little different from most of the advisory boards because of the statutory nature of the Planning Commission and also the decision-making authority given to the Planning Commission. So it's a great opportunity to meet candidates and get to know them, also helps build some camaraderie between the Commission and the trustees, given the working relationship that we need moving forward. So we have Tina Bennett and Michael Westheimer here, and we've invited them to come and say a few words. If you have a question or two, feel free. Looks like Tina is going first, and then follow Michael, and then.
Yeah, thanks, Tina.
Yeah. Sure, yeah, thank you for having us. So yeah, my name is Tina Bennett. I grew up in Buena Vista. Graduated from Buena Vista High School, always through every Parsons, all the way through. And my husband and I made a move back in 2018. I've certainly seen this town grow, to say the least. But honestly, the growth is what brought my husband and I back and we want to raise our family here. So yeah, I applied for the Planning and Zoning Commission. I now am a professional engineer. I work as a civil engineer remotely for a very large firm out of Denver called AECom. You know, I, most of my projects are out of the state of Colorado. We do have one specific project with the state of Colorado, but I would like to use my expertise a little bit more locally. You know, it's close to my heart, obviously, growing up here. So I thought joining the Planning and Zoning would be the perfect opportunity. Yeah, I haven't per se had the opportunity to dive into the town code or many town codes for that matter, but I certainly know my way around drawings and specifications for very large projects. So I certainly hope that I can provide a little bit of expertise to the Commission. So yeah, if you have any questions, be happy to take them, or I hope to join the Commission.
Have a question?
No, I'm just, I will acknowledge, I'm quite biased. We need more engineers who are civil.
I did hear that there was a need for, you know, a need for folks on the Commission. So that was one of my voters.
Joel, would you kind of describe how the Board of Trustees and the Planning Commission work together with developers?
Yeah, so, you know, depending on the processes for approval, there's some, sometimes when people will come and applicant will come with a project to the Planning and Zoning Commission, or well, to the town, and it can be approved administratively through staff or with, you know, Brian. And then there are other projects that we have to bring straight to the Planning and Zoning Commission through public processes for review and approval or denial, et cetera. And then there are other projects, including changes to the municipal code that go first to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a recommendation to then come to the Board of Trustees. The Board of Trustees, you know, Planning, zoning has a lens of planning and zoning. And so they base that decision, whatever recommendation, on certain criteria as it relates to planning and zoning, comes to the Board of Trustees. And you all have a much more amplified, I guess, perspective of what else to put in the bucket for decision-making, right? Besides planning and zoning. So you guys will come up and make a decision. And sometimes it might be go back to planning and zoning, you know, with changes and it can be back and forth. Some processes will, some projects will begin zoning. Like a sketch plan, P&amp;Z and the Board will have a meeting together to look at a major subdivision sketch plan. So there's opportunity to, for discussion. In the comp plan review process, there'll be a lot more input. The, you know, P&amp;Z is in charge of the comp plans structurally, and Board of Trustees will be giving input. There'll be more back and forth with that process. It's not a bad idea to have some kind of work session or a planning meeting or something with both groups. You know, just as a more open door, you know, targeted kind of conversation, but to get to know each other. Because they inform zoning, they inform planning, code recommendations, and you guys decide on those, and there's some back and forth.
So Tina, do you still want to do it?
Thank you very much. I do, I would be happy to join.
Thank you, I'd be happy with your talent.
Thank you.
And the other person is Michael Westheimer.
Good evening, yes, Michael Westheimer. I was not born in Buena Vista, but we got here as soon as we could. We started coming in about 2010 and bought a place outside of town in 2014, 15, and then bought a house here in town in South Maine in 2018. When COVID hit, our last son was headed off to college, and my wife said, I'm going to Buena Vista and I'm taking the dog.
Oh, coming.
Yes, we've been here ever since. We're proud full-time residents and we enjoy the community very much. I'm a real estate developer. I have no projects in BV, in Chaffey County, or in Colorado at all. I specialize in building schools and multifamily housing throughout the Southwest and some in the southeast as well. Served on the Zoning Commission in San Antonio, Texas, which is where we're from originally, for five years, nearly five years. And have some experience level with their technical advisory committee, which is the code review process in San Antonio. So look forward to being involved in the same manner here, but with nobody mad at me for my own projects.
Yeah. Good, and I, you did point out that you live in South Maine. Because I think the Planning and Zoning Commission requires that one live within the town limits. So that's great. Am I right about that?
That's correct.
Okay.
See to that.
Yeah.
We live full-time here. The cabin is $390. It's, you know, by the reservoir. So it's, it's in the county.
Yeah, but you're in town here, which is great. Good.
Happy to take questions.
Questions?
I do have one question. If you were to be engaged in a real estate development project in Chaffey County or in Buena Vista, would you see that as a conflict of interest? How would you address?
If it needed rezoning, I certainly would see it as a conflict of interest. And I'd either recuse myself or have to leave the Commission. Controversial. But I don't envision that. The schools I build are charter schools, and they are the, just frankly, the state of Colorado's reimbursement per student is not enough to bring them here. So very difficult situation. And the multifamily developments are related to charter schools, and they tend to follow those patterns through, mainly through Texas and Arizona.
Do you foresee a potential for you to be involved in development projects here?
None whatsoever. I, I, nobody's mad at me here.
I'll keep it that way.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
So later this evening, we'll, you know, there are two positions open for non-voting members, alternate members of the Board, and we can discuss later on. And it's up to the Board whether or not, you know, recommend approval or et cetera, or approve them of the appointment. We will have these, this item on the next agenda if the Board would like to on the, March 26th.
Good job. Great, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you in advance for your hard work. So much going on, you know. It'll be great.
Appreciate it.
Okay, now we have a public hearing on the water allocation policy.
Actually, item B, still on the presentation, of course, Chaffey County Wildlife, wildfire protection plan update.
Oh, yeah, okay, sorry about that. So this is Kim Markey. Hi, Kim.
How are you? Thanks for having us back. Can I see who's here on the on the, yeah, because not everyone could physically be in BV tonight. I want to make sure to introduce everyone. They had some questions about if they want to speak. Do they just raise their hand? Okay. So you guys online, if you want to hop in or speak, you just raise your hand and then they'll turn on your mic. Is that correct? Oh, I missed someone. Nope, that's it. Okay. So I'm Kim Markey, I'm with Invision Chaffey County. I'm the outreach coordinator for the Forest Health Council. And hopefully in your packets, you got a copy of this year's annual report to the community. We come every year, thank you for having us, every year, give you that report and give a little presentation. I have one, two, three, four, seven folks from the Forest Health Council here to answer your questions. And a couple of them are going to talk a little bit, update you on some new things we have coming this year. So first, I wanted to just start this little presentation really quick. I'm sorry, let me tell you who's here. So we have online Jeff Sekman with Chaffey Fire. He's our Wildland Coordinator with Chaffey Fire. We have Pat Mercer from the US Forest Service Level Ranger District. Perry Edwards, he's the Salida District Ranger with the US Forest Service. Kyle DeShenis is here with Bird Conservancy of the Rockies. And he's a wildlife biologist, and his organization was very involved in the Riverside project that was completed this year up north of BV. So now we finished the railroad bridge project on the east side of the river and the Riverside project on the west side of the river. And the town did invest some matching funds for us into that. And so we're excited. We thought you might have some questions about those projects being completed. They include private and some public land. Let's see, Ken Maxwell with Colorado Fire Camp is online. Rich Atkins from the Office of Emergency Management is here. And attending is JT Shaver from the Colorado State Forest Service. He is now the Supervisory Forester with the Salida Field Office. Thank you, everybody, for coming. So let's go to the first slide, and I'm just going to try and do this here in just a few minutes. I wanted to remind you guys what we're doing with the CWPP. Most counties in Colorado and around the West have a community wildfire protection plan now. Ours was updated in 2020. We know that everyone in the community is really concerned about wildfire threat and danger. So the first thing we did was update that plan. Since 2020, it's now part of the comp plan. We've been working together on the Forest Health Council to implement the plan. There's a bunch of goals in it, but the main one is to do some treatments. We need to thin the forest in strategic areas to try and protect our community assets. So we worked with the Colorado Forest Restoration Institute at CSU to map what the community said was important to protect from wildfire. Firefighter lives, human life, drinking, water supply, other infrastructure, homes, wildlife and recreation assets such as the Arkansas River. So all those assets were mapped. The fire danger was mapped, red and beige mapped there. The inset is where our valued assets are at the highest risk. A lot of people misconstrue this field treatment priority area map, which is the bigger one. You think that's where the wildfire danger is the highest. I wish we wouldn't have made the colors red, orange, and yellow. We should have made them like green and purple or something. Because that's where we need to treat to reduce the danger of fire on those community assets. So those are our strategic treatment priority areas. We think that if we can treat less than 5% of the landscape, we can reduce the risk of fire to our assets by about 50%. So our goal over the next year's, next 10 years, so to 2030, is to treat 30,000 acres. So that's the main plan, and I like to review that really quickly, just because it's been a year since I've been here. Hopefully, you've at least seen this map on the right. But again, just what we're doing and where we're going. There are other goals in the plan that I can talk about, and they're explained in the report, too. Let's go to the next slide really quick. So I love this big map on the right because it's like, the inset is what we wanted to do, and here we are on year four, at the end of 2023. And I can show you on a map what we've done so far. And by me, by we, I mean everyone in the Forest Health Council. There's more than 50 partners on there, all the agencies are on there. Pretty much every professional in the county working on wildfire, wildfire protection, forest health is on the council. So the dark purple is what we've accomplished. Yes, 10,500 acres out of 30,000 have been addressed. And then the teal, that bright color, is what are in the, we call it in the pipeline. So we're talking about it, we're planning it, we've raised funding for it. The Forest Health Council meets about four times a year. And man, those are some intense planning meetings. We talk about where are we going next? How can we work together to make this a better project? How can we raise funding together? Those are the things that the Forest Health Council is doing. Okay, so this, in 2023, we treated over 5,000 acres. So as you can see by the little chart on the bottom, we doubled what we had done for the prior three years. So there definitely was a ramp up. But we did a great, definitely community celebration here. We did a great job and treated some good acres in 2023, and we're pretty excited about it. One of the reasons is because we have some successful prescribed burns and Ranger Edward's, we'll talk about that here in just a second. So I'm happy to answer any questions later about the details about how this plan works. But I want to get to the Forest Health Council members, so they can talk to you more in detail, because they're the ones doing all of this. Let's go to the next slide. So yeah, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Perry Edwards, the Ranger with the Salida Ranger District with the US Forest Service. And he has some stuff to update you on and talk about the prescribed burns that we have this year in Chaffey County.
Hey, everyone, Ranger Perry Edwards here, calling in from Pueblo, where we're having a fire preparedness meeting. So I was not able to attend in person this year. Just wanted to mention, again, that the Chavano front and three-mile area, we did over 3,000 acres this past year, which was a record for the mountain zone. The most we've done in the past is probably 600 or 700 acres. But looking at the large landscape and the conditions of fuels and the forest health, we really need to ramp that up. We were able to do that this year, and I'm really excited about that. We're looking at some areas in Trout Creek, and then over there in the four-mile area, prepping and possibly doing some burning this fall or next spring, but it just depends on how far we get. I'll also throw out there that our newest area that we're going to be analyzing is the Jones and Bold Mountain area and Chalk Creek area that have high levels of fuels and very much some chimneys going in and out of there that we're working on doing some vet and some prescription fire over the next several years. But we're still in the analysis phase right now. But we really think that this is going to tie in nicely with the area near Princeton that JT Shaver and Colorado State Forest Service have worked on. And the key to this thing is that fire doesn't care who is managing or who owns the land. We need, we need to build those areas to try to stop catastrophic wildfire and working all together to make that happen. And that's what I have, thank you.
Thanks, Perry. Are you able to stay with us for a little bit longer in case there's questions?
Absolutely.
Okay, so I'm going to move on, if that's okay with you guys, and hopefully we'll have time for your questions. JT with the Colorado State Forest Service, we'll go to the next slide here, was going to talk about private property treatments. We did over 2,000 acres in 2023.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for having us here. Glad to be here in person. And yeah, just wanted to highlight a few projects that we have completed as Colorado State Forest Service on some private lands. One that isn't as impactful as much, but one I did want to highlight, because a lot of people have seen it, is the Poncha Pass project we completed. Two phases, we were actually able to treat on the west and east side of the pass going up. A lot of Douglas fir beetles still active up there, but we were able to remove a lot of infested trees that still had beetle in them and get them in the sawmill to be utilized before they rotted on the stuff. So was able to tie some of that forest health and fuels mitigation into the great work that the US Forest Service did up on Cleveland Mountain in the Poncha Pass. So we were able to tie treatments pretty much from Poncha Pass all the way down into Salida. Few other projects, a little closer here to BV. Perry did talk a little bit. We did a fuel break along rodeo road on the Maxwell State Land Section, as well as the Frontier Young Life Camp as well. So that was a little bit over 100 acres. Really heavy dwarf mistletoe and ponderosa there, unhealthy forest, really thick. So the great thing with that project, it will definitely help the communities of Pine Grove and Lost Creek Ranch. Also Ingrass routes out of 321 right there. But also wanted to highlight that we worked with the Southwest Conservation Corps, and we are in year two now. I have them do adjacent work to that fuel break, to feather it, to just add a little more forest health thinning, as well as fuels reduction there. Another big program we have going on, I'd have heard of, we like our catchy names, but we have Chaffey Chips and Chaffey Treats. And I worked on that late. On Chaffey Treats is a kind of a subgroup of the Forest Health Council, working on implementing more, working on type of plans utilizing RCP money through the RCS. I'll try not to say too, too many acronyms on that one, but it's the Regional Conservation Partnership Program. It's a large grant that we work very closely with the National Forest Foundation on. And we are planning two large projects to get done this fall. We'll have them bid out, but one of those is in Mesa Antero Estates. And the other is up at the Young Life Trail West Camp as well. We're going to be treating about 100 acres up there. So those are some of the main projects. And then just the final one that we've had is, you know, our Chaffey Chips program, helping communities out each year with Chaffey Fire. We were able to work with Mount Harvard this year as well, and had really successful Chaffey Chips years. And we'll be up in Game Trail this spring. So yeah, that's kind of a highlight, a lot more to come, but thank you for your time.
Thanks, JT. So yeah, I just wanted to reiterate, $6 million in federal funding that JT was talking about to help us do treatments on private properties. That's, that's pretty awesome. And also, the homeowners in Game Trail and other areas that are in the Wube outside of BV have really high interest in doing these treatments and treating their lands. It's awesome. We're in a really great position. We've been able to hire more foresters to help these private landowners do what they need to do on their properties and do it together, you know, have large projects. So thanks, JT, for all the work your staff is doing. They have to expand, physically expand the office in Salida or in Ponte Springs, because we had to add so many foresters to get this work done. So it's pretty, pretty cool story. Chaffey Chips is slash hallway service, and 750 homeowners have participated in that now. They spent over 8,000 hours creating their slash files that have been hauled away. So fun stuff. Let's go to the next slide. I want to quickly get to questions. I just wanted to mention, Ken Maxwell is on the line, you guys are hopefully familiar with Colorado Fire Camp. This big picture on the left is burning piles in Trails West. This big picture on the left is burning piles in Trails West. You might have seen smoke for a couple of days in January. So it's really nice. They got a lot of work done there and they were able to burn those piles this winter. Next slide. Rich Atkins is on the line. Talk a little bit about community preparation. Our plan is not just about treating acres, it's about everybody getting ready. We have Everbridge that people should sign up for. We had plus five percent, I think it was five hundred and some odd people signed up this year. But man, we have so many new residents, you know. Hopefully we can get more people to sign up for that. They should be doing their evacuation plans with their families so that they can get out quickly. We have resources for that. So if you want to publish that as the town, let us know and I can help you get that out to citizens. Hopefully people are thinking about what they're going to do if we have a fire. Next slide. We, we can talk about funding if you guys have any questions, but now I'm just going to set this aside. We have raised thirty-three million or spent thirty-three million dollars on this plan so far. That's a lot of contribution from the partners on the Forest Health Council that are working on this stuff. As you can see, I think it's yeah, fifteen percent coming from the federal agencies and twenty-two percent from federal grants. Of course, we also have locally our Chaffey Common Ground Fund, which has contributed four point two billion dollars towards this work. And we're happy to have leveraged that up to thirty-three. Okay, I'm going to be quiet and see if you guys have any questions. Again, we have a bunch of people on the line and JT is here depending on what you guys might like to ask. Oh, sorry. I just tipped that in. That's, I took that slide in there just in case you needed it, but that's kind of the end of the presentation.
So Stace, any questions for Kim?
I know the Chaffey County Fire was doing, I think it was Chaffey County Fire that was doing, going around our camping areas and making sure fires are out and educating people. Is that part of you or is it Chaffey County Fire or is that something you continue to be doing or is that?
We have the Chaffey Rec Rangers program. Maybe I ask Perry Edwards to speak that because some of those rangers work for the Forest Service here on the ground.
Okay, looks like I'm back on. Yeah, we have, we have the Rec Rangers program that we've been working with Chaffey County on and they get part of the funding from Chaffey County on that. That's really fantastic. It makes so much of a difference to what we have, what I like to call adult supervision out there because people do things. Sometimes it's simply ignorance, it's not stupidity, it's just they don't know any better. Sometimes they just need to have adults out there to make, keep them in check a little bit more than that. We also have our fire crews, which are patrolling regularly and checking in on folks that are having fires. Our law enforcement officer as well. One thing, we oftentimes will give warnings for many things. In the case of an unintended campfire, you're going to get a several hundred dollar ticket to make sure that you are well aware of unintended campfires are not okay. But those are some of the things we have going on that are helping to do that. And we really appreciate the help from Chaffey County insofar as providing partial funding for those positions. It's critical.
Thanks Perry. So yeah, Chaffey County just approved funding through the county. And then we have a partnership with Chaffey Common Ground now to fund five years of those rangers. And there's eight positions and they're spread between there with every agency on the ground. A H R A along the river, Forest Service and the B L M.
I guess, and actually kind of answered some of the questions. I was just going to ask the four point two million from the Chaffey Common Ground, just kind of how that, is that, you know, it's coming from people here, right? And I know you get a ton of funding through, like you said, the federal and state, just different grants, which is great. But just out of curiosity, is there a breakdown of how that's being spent or where, where it goes? Like obviously it's, some of that's going to the positions for the Rec Rangers, which is awesome. I'm just curious, you know, how else, just for public, you know, how else is that?
Yeah, so Chaffey Common Ground is a grant program and so there are applications. And the committee makes a recommendation to the B O C C and they have so far approved all of the recommendations. So four point two million is a lot. There have been a million plus dollars worth of recommendations each year since two thousand and nineteen when we started the program. So I think what I prefer to do is just send you an easy list, you know, to say, here's what that four point two million dollars has been invested in. Generally, it's been in juror cross jurisdictional projects. So for example, a fuel break that includes private land and B L M land and forest land. You know, the, the project that JT talked about, Rodeo Road was funded.
It was funded in partially common grounds and what we call SFA funding, it's state fire assistance. So one nice thing about common grounds funding is a lot of these grants are fifty percent a one-to-one batch. And it's really hard to find other batch. And with it being county money, with these state grants that we have, we can match that with common grounds. It truly gets to the size of people that make an impact. That's been a huge portion and a huge help for us going for those matching grants where we can match state with county funding.
Yeah, so to those types of projects, sometimes equipment has been purchased. For example, the trailers that are used with Chaffey Chips. Colorado Fire Camp has had some money that they use to get co-swap funding from the state for Southwest conservation work groups to come in. And it's so cool to see those kids come and learn how to use chainsaws. And you know, they get involved in the projects and get on the ground, actual learning through their schooling at the fire camp. And yeah, so a lot, a lot of different things, but I've made a note and I'll send that email out so you guys can get those specifics on that four point two million.
Thank you so much.
Yep.
Other questions?
Oh, I appreciated your updates both years. I've been on the board and it seems like a really well managed program. And I hear from folks involved in Chaffey Chips and they're very excited about what they're doing and excited about seeing the Southwest Conservation Corps kids, youth around. And so I think it's a great program and really good work. Thank you.
Thank you. It's important that we come every year and keep you updated so that folks can follow along with the progress. Anyone here with us on Forest Health Council want to add something?
So I just want to put it out there that we are planning on burning some more of the piles on Cleveland Mountain as early as tomorrow with the weather that we're expecting to come in. And I'm going to, since Ranger Mercer hasn't brought anything up from Mudville, the hope is with this storm coming in, we may be burning those piles over there on Railroad Bridge just north of BV, northeast of BV.
Awesome. Thanks for letting us know that Perry. And Pat.
Appreciate your, yeah, I appreciate your paying so much attention to the mitigating the risks that are out there in the forest. So and particularly protecting our watershed.
You're welcome. All right.
Thank you.
See you next year. Unless you want to call us back before that. Have a great night.
Thank you. Okay, now I would like to open a public hearing on the water allocation policy. And part of this will be that the Board of Trustees could approve the adoption of Resolution Number Twenty-seven, Series Twenty-two-four, entitled A Resolution of the Board of Trustees for the Town of Bena Vista, Colorado, Approving Amendments to the Town of Bena Vista Water Allocation Policy. So Joe, I think you're going to talk about this, is that right?
Indeed.
Date us this discussion.
Thank you, Mayor. This, this follows up process. We had a work session February thirteenth of this year where we introduced some, some potential changes because the water allocation policy has an annual review. In addition, we have the fifty acre feet that we, we have from the upper arc. And we need to decide kind of a game plan for what to do with that for the first year with this five acre feet and subsequent years as, as five acre feet come online for a while. So we've outlined that plan. You all have seen it before. I've got slides that are pretty much the same as before with some changes as per our discussion. We also heard very little public comment. You know, it was published online and when the hearing was published and but we did have a couple of comments. One, one is represented. It was just mostly concerned, hey, with this emergency bucket, because we redefine the emergency bucket as we'll go through. But we redefine a little bit more. So we did and those, those changes are published, blue, which we'll cover. And there were a couple other, there was one concern about what if you, can you pull from multiple buckets? You know, and that's part of the flexibility built in that depending on the project, there's a recommendation from staff, let's pull from multiple buckets and they would have to be approved by staff or planning zoning or the Board of Trustees depending on who the decision-making authority is for the, any particular project. And there was another, hey, let's have a public, a public process instead of just hearing from developers. I think that last year there was some real specific targeted meetings with development community. And this time it was, you know, that was not set out independent of just the normal public process. So we can make changes to that. It's the board wants. But the process was outlined in, in our allocation policy and that's what we So propose, let's go back one more slide. Let's see. There we go. Okay, so it is a public hearing. I already covered the firstly bullet points and Mayor, you, just to reiterate, it's a public, after the staff presentation, there'll be time for public comment and a discussion and then a motion. And we'll go through, of course, the options that continue deny, approve, et cetera. So the proposed changes, as we saw before, we have some adjustment to the categories include the new acre feet. We are proposing to reallocate some of the existing buckets as we talked about pulling a little from multifamily and a little from affordable and putting them in that general bucket just because we've got a really big project online. It's our very first year and we're just trying to kind of figure out that proper balance initially. And then things should be pretty steady here after. We also have some clarification on some of the text that, that was published in various colors. The fifty acre feet. The, remember we only have the first five this year. So we're proposing what to do with it plus setting out a plan for the next twenty acre feet, knowing that the half of it, the second twenty-five acre feet is targeted as backup emergency water and substitute for project water. We did redefine as per trustee comments. Originally we had, let's create this, take the emergency bucket and turn it into something else. And instead of doing that, we, we did that, but then we redefined emergency as yeah, this is for project water. So it's still exists. So, so future, future town knows the intention of, of tonight. So the allocation of the fifty acre feet, as you recall, this mirrors what we talked about in February. The first five acre feet, we're proposing to take it and put it all in that general bucket, three, five acre feet. See the chart here to bit. And then next year, within the second five acre feet, we're proposing, so thirty-five S F Es, taking five and putting them in infill, economic development, affordable, multi-family rentals and then take fifteen, put it in the general. We can't really do a lot of multifamily and affordable recall for a larger project without pulling from both general and that bucket. So we need to keep them both together. And then subsequent years, adding five to, to the different buckets as well. So current status, this is the categories, as you recall, we had preempted the S F E counts, you know, the building permits through March the twelfth through tonight. So these are the same numbers as we saw in February because there, well, we've had some other applications come in. We had already preempted the building permits we would have actually issued. We have two more, but we have not processed them. Yeah, anyway, you guys, these numbers are up, you'll see in the far, we have three hundred and fifty-two point two S F Es available until the five acre feet. So the proposal, again, we're proposing to, there's a typo in there in the big green box to propose to make an adjustment to categories in addition to the five acre feet, not in addiction. The five acre feet. So anyway, so what we're proposing, removing carbon in category because that is not not a category anymore. We've already put water toward that project. Future carbon and water will come from infill. And then we take, reduce affordable and multifamily by twenty and fifteen and add that to the general along with the thirty-five from this five acre.
Sorry, Joe, when you say future carbon, it will come from infill, you mean like stage two?
Yeah, yeah, we've already put, we've got water set aside from the childcare centers.
Okay, so stage. That's why I just want to make sure.
Thank you. And then we redefine the emergency. So really to highlight that this is project water using storage in upper arc. So that's those buckets, that's where that emergency. Okay. That was the first year and these are, this just represents a plan for years, two, three, four and five of the upper arc water. Every year this can be altered and changed because this is just a plan, of course, but this is the intention. It's important to lay it out now so that in a year when we're back, future boards can, in, in staff can understand, oh, this is the thought process. We had some changes to the text. Again, there had been some circular language within how the process of how to assign categories of water to different projects. And that text of circular, we preserve it in a figure. This is, we want to take a look at this first and the second and this third. And so that the figure within here is preserved. But we removed the text that made it kind of confusing for staff to understand what was going on. Again, we added language for this non-infill category, redefined the emergency categories, clarify the processes for updates, amendments to the water allocation policy. And then we added this one additional trigger point that gives us the ability to visit if, if there's something in the process that needs clarification or something that is not associated with the buckets. For example, trustee Swisher's question on what, what happens if you want to change the code and restrict high water users? And that needs to be reflected in water allocation policy. So this trigger point allows us to visit for something like that in the future, knowing we didn't have time to like flesh that out, that idea out. And it could be coming in the future. And so that's what the, that language is. So, so or else we have to wait till next March. So. Okay. Yeah, so next steps. Well, let me, let me first, before we go to that, that one comment on, we added in, in blue in the, it was about emergency use. Well, under what conditions is it an emergency or not? And so we added this, should conditions change and project water is lost as a source? It is intended that fifty S F Es of that twenty-five acre feet. Fifty SFEs of that twenty-five acre feet are reserved for emergency situations. While the red, while the rest of that, so the other SFEs would be available for irrigation of habitat loss and water number two. So statement of intent for what that, uh, emergency would be. Anyway, the, the next steps, um, after public comment, any kind of discussion or questions? And then a motion to approve, deny, approve with amendments, this resolution number twenty-seven, or. Continue the hearing until, uh, date certain.
Trustees, do you have, uh, questions for Joel or further comments about the water allocation policy?
Yeah, I mean, it, it doesn't directly relate to this necessarily, but since I'll have more time to talk, it's just running out of time, I guess. The, I, I mentioned a lot during the work session, though, is, and it's kind of falls into the added trigger, I guess, but, um. I guess, I'll just state my concern, is that if certain categories, we're not seeing people use up. Something in multifamily, workforce, affordable, um, and those continue year after year. Those just aren't getting used up, and we're pulling from there, putting it into general, like from then, even though we've, the purpose to a certain extent of these buckets. Is priorities, like where we want to see the town grow and where, um, is, and I guess this is comics, I don't think it's probably appropriate to. Tie this in in, in any formal way, but. I don't know, I'm saying, it, part of the, the benefit, I think, of having these buckets and revisiting them this each year is, it's a chance to see where we're at. Where are our priorities, and I think part of that should also be, instead of, well, these aren't getting used, so I guess we could take from here and put to here. The question should be, well, why aren't they getting used? What are more things that we can do to make sure these get used? And instead of saying, well, they're just, nobody wants to do these things, or the only way we're going to do affordable is if it's mainly generals, we have to put. You know, seventy-five percent of this, it's generals, the twenty-five, you know what I mean, like, but is there other stuff we could be doing, is, if it's. Uh, I mean, we don't have a lot of land necessarily, but if it's land swaps, if it's other things to tie to it, to make it more enticing, we. We had that audit a year and a half ago or two years ago, and I think we've only implemented a couple of the recommendations, so I don't know if that's part of it, but I think. Anyways, I guess, like I said, I don't even know if I'm asking for anything right now, it's just stated of having a concern of each year, it's like. Well, we don't have any multifamily, nobody's tapping into the affordable or workforce, but. We're really running low in general, so stake from here and put to there, and instead of it being like, no, we're not doing that, we're keeping it here, let's actually work on. How do we make sure this gets utilized, and what can we do, or we can, even if that's the case, then more structure on that. Did that make sense? And again, I don't even know what I'm saying, I'm just talking out loud.
I appreciate that, if I may, uh, and I think that's part of that last trigger idea, because, you know, we talked, like, even. What if, in order to, if you use ten general, you can't have ten general unless you use one of these other things, or. You know, something like that, some, some other kind of creativity, because you were pointing out in the work session and others. That general bucket can go down to zero really quickly, and then, then we have to pull from other buckets, so.
Then what's the point of having buckets?
Exactly, some kind of creative, mix and match sort of approach can we do? And between with all the top side and the various projects, you know, things happening. We just haven't really been able to come up with something solid to say, here, here trustees, between February. Thirteenth to March twelfth, and so that's part of, was the reason of having that trigger, is to have some time so we can. Come up with something like that before next March, after tonight.
Yeah, to, to make sure there's incentive for people to pull from the other buckets as well, because. They're just pulling from the general, they're like, well, I don't need to, so I can just build million-dollar houses. But, and, and then all of a sudden it's gone, and then all you have left is affordable or infill or something like that, so, you know, I think that's. I think it's going to really come into play once it gets to that point, and yes, we'll see what the board does then.
I also like it, I mean, this, this is what, since I've been on the board, the thing I, and not sure how. You know, when I went to CML, I saw there were multiple other avenues, but the main thing I kept hearing was just, well, it just doesn't pencil. We can't afford to actually do any of these things, like, and so then the water's just going to sit there, get stagnant, right? So it's other things that actually could make it more appealing, and then is that how we kind of look at it? Because, yeah, if it's just the, well, okay, we'll do a little bit of the gen, we'll do a little bit of this for the general, and that's just our only. Character stick, however you want to look at it, then I think we'll just be nibbling around the edges. That's it, just wanted to add that to that of. Because again, that's all I kept hearing, is, well, we can't do anything below eighty percent AMI, and really doing multifamilies, you just can't pencil it unless it's.
If it gets to a lower point, maybe you can't pull from the general unless you pull from another bucket, like a certain percentage or something.
I think, uh, that's, yeah. Point well taken, I think something to keep in mind with the two buckets that we say, these two are, are being used, is. Carbon Street sixty units is essentially multifamily rental.
Right.
And so that project is happening, that's not to say no multifamily rental has taken place. Uh, and then the affordable workforce housing, um, the reason why some has moved to the general, because. The project that's taking a portion of the general is kind of a sixty-forty split of affordable bucket. Right, and the general bucket, the crossing.
Right.
Um, so those projects are taking place. With this particular one, I think long-term, it's probably worthwhile to see what that play looks like, because the crossing is a perfect example. Where you've got, you know, a pretty good mix, right, forty percent deed restricted to sixty percent market rate. Um, as bad as good as you're going to get, um. Tying that directly, but that project, if another project were to come in before the crossing final plot. The crossing wouldn't happen, because there wouldn't be enough general, even though he's at that sixty-forty split.
Right.
So it's definitely something, I think, to keep in mind moving forward, uh, but I did want to point out that those two that are being taken from. There are two substantial projects that are coming through the pipeline that will utilize those buckets kind of directly.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that, and I think calling it directly is helpful, too, I appreciate that. Guys, again, like I said, I just wanted to hear the concerns, make sure you had some structure on that.
Hello, trustee, comments or questions? Would someone like to make a motion in regard to this? Oh, sorry, cut that. Um, is there any comment from the public? I'd like to open the public comment. The online. Out there. Okay, I'll close the public comment, and, um. Is there any further or discussion of this? So would anyone like to make a motion in regard to this?
I'll make the motion to approve resolution number twenty-seven, series twenty-twenty-four.
Second.
So McCratchy and Roe. All in favor? Anyone opposed? The motion passes.
Thank you, thank you, Joel.
Thank you.
Close that public hearing. And the next one is a public hearing for Spoon Fed LLC doing business as Simple Eatery. There's a typo in the, in the agenda, but it's Simple Eatery. Board will consider approving a change of class of the Spoon Fed LLC. DBA Simple Eatery Liquor License from Beer and Wine to Hotel and Restaurant. And, um, we will have, um, Ryan McFadden here. So, does the applicant speak first here? Before our staff?
Normally, the staff speaks first.
Okay, so the staff should go first.
Okay.
Okay, I'll give a quick overview, and then Ryan can share. Thanks, Ryan. Okay, good evening. The board is being asked to consider approving application for a hotel restaurant liquor license for Spoon Fed. LLC doing businesses Simple Eatery. Currently, Simple Eatery has a beer and wine license, which only allows them to. Excuse me, to sell wine or beer. Ryan's asking to get a hotel restaurant license that authorizes him to sell malt. Wine and spiritous liquors. The change of license types process is the same as if the applicant was applying for a new license with two exclusions. The needs and desires petition and the approval from the town and county departments are not required, since he already has an established place of business. The appropriate fees have been paid, the public hearing was scheduled with the board of trustees for tonight, March twelfth. The notice was published in the Chatham County Times on February twenty-second, and on the property on February fourteen. Backgrounds were submitted for Ryan, and satisfactory results were received from CDI and FBI. Proof of possession of the premises have been provided, and the board is being asked to consider a motion to approve, approve with amendments or deny the application for a hotel restaurant. Liquor license for Simple Eatery.
Thank you. Okay, now we're ready for you, Mr. McCradd.
Excellent. How's everybody tonight? Um, yeah, so it's pretty straightforward, I guess, since we've had a beer and wine license for eight years. Um, and since COVID, we also served frozen yogurt, COVID killed frozen yogurt, so I have a dead space. And there's a plan to remodel, um, and enhance our services, we're going to put in a small bar. Um, so this is the first stage of, of that, and just a, I had a renewal coming up, and I thought, let's just get a change to. Looking at a remodel in the fall after summer, which would give us sixty, seventy-five percent of this year covered by this license, but. Won't be necessarily offering any, uh, spiritous liquor until the remodel happens. So, yeah, any questions?
You're saying the bar will go where the frozen yogurt?
Yeah, that wall will come down, and we'll install, we'll put a bar in and change our model, and kind of just spruce up a little bit, add a little bit more offerings. Get rid of that dead space.
Anyone have questions for, uh, the staff or the applicant? Just, I guess.
I think COVID killed frozen yogurt.
No one wanted to like self-serve and share communal topping. And it might have been on the way out anyway, it's been eight years, so, uh, you know, it was a decision to make, like, yeah. Okay, well, we were banned from actually serving during the restrictions, but once they opened it up, it was sort of a call on my part, like, there's no interest, so.
Well, you have to change your outside space in any way?
Um, no, we already have all the perimeters and fencing and, and everything to regulate that, um, and the code's the same for the beer and wine license. So that's not.
Do you require a gate or anything?
Uh, generally, you have to have some kind of partitioning and signage, um, we have signage and we have gate at the patio entrance, so we can. We already comply, and it's not a new, it's not a new feature to comply with, as far as that goes.
This won't affect your ability to offer Cajun pasta, will it?
No.
I had that tonight, it was great.
Oh, you had, okay, excellent. That stays the same. Okay, yeah, hold me to that, for sure.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, um, thank you. Now, are there any comments from the public? I'll, I'll open this public, to public comment, are there any comments from the public? Okay, I'll close public comment. Is there anybody on the, on the Zoom?
Who has got their hand raised?
Close public comment. So. Is there any further discussion by the board? Okay, would someone like to make a motion in regard to this license?
I make a motion to approve the application, um, for a hotel restaurant liquor license for Spoon Fed LLC. DBA Simply Eatery located at four oh two East Main Street, Buena Vista, owner Ryan McFadden.
Thank you. So we have Cobb and Swisher. All in favor? Anyone opposed? The motion passes, and the application to change your liquor license is approved. That hearing is closed. So the next public hearing is, um, with regard to Coyote Mescalaria y Cerveceria. LLC, DBA Coyote Mescalaria y Cerveceria. So we are going to consider, the board will consider approving a tavern liquor license. For Coyote Mescalaria y Cerveceria LLC, DBA Coyote Mescal, Mescalaria y Cerveceria. Located at eight oh one Front Loop, Unit One A, Steve Trujillo owner. So, uh, first we'll hear from our staff, okay?
As Mayor Fay outlined, the board is being asked to approve a tavern liquor license. And on February seventh, Steve Trujillo applied for the tavern liquor license, the appropriate fees have been paid. And the public hearing before the board of trustees was scheduled for tonight, March twelfth. The notice was published in the Chatham County Times on February twenty-second and posted on the property on February twenty-third. Background checks were submitted for Steve Trujillo, and the satisfactory results were received back from CDI and FBI. Proof of possession of the premise has been provided, and a needs and desires petition of the neighborhood was circulated and included in the application. The neighborhood is a one-mile radius from the proposed current license, the proposed license premise. Police Chief Dean Morgan, Planning Director Joel Benson, Co-Enforcement Officer Grant Bryant, and Chatham County Consumer Protection Specialist Stephanie Nelson. Has completed and approved the Town County Department, Department of Approval Form. Approval from Chatham County Fire Protection District Fire Marshal Kiro Jones and Chatham County Building Department. Building official Chad Chadwick is pending inspections after a change of use was submitted. And a certificate of occupancy is pending issuance from them. Revocable encroachment license agreement between the town and Steve Trujillo. Allowing the use of the portion of the public sidewalk on the north side of the building for the customer seating areas, also pending. The location of the tavern is the same place where Black Girl Bikes is currently at, and they too also have a liquor license. So the liquor premise is going to mirror what is down there currently, with a little bit of changes in the big area where. Uh, Matt and Lindsay currently have bikes, but that's the location for. Coyote, so the board is being asked to consider a motion to conditionally approve pending approvals from Chatham County Fire Protection District. Chatham County Building Department and the executed revocable encroachment license agreement. Approve with amendments or deny the application for the tavern liquor license.
Okay, are there, um. I guess we'll hear from the, the applicant first, and then we'll have discussion, like questions. Please give your name and address for the record.
Um, Steve Trujillo, and, uh, address business or, or personal?
Um, I think, uh, business.
Does this be the item one front loop, one A, where the, again, where the Black Girl Bikes is currently located? And, uh, yeah, thanks for having me, um, uh, essentially had an opportunity, Matt and Lindsay at Black Girl Bikes. Um, you know, they, uh, we, we talked about the concept, and, and, you know, they've had a bar there for several years, and, uh. Uh, you know, it's mostly a bike shop, but it puts a few taps, and we, we found an opportunity to make it cozier, and, and, you know, we, uh. Jenna, I live here, and we, we call this place home, and so, um, we wanted to, to create a place for people to come and create community and. And make it cozier and a little bit more upscale, you know, uh, uh, mezcal's more like wine, it's, 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 it's not a dive bar. It's, it's more a place where people come and sip and, and, and talk and laugh together, and so that's kind of the vision and the goal. Um, again, I'd be roommates with, with, with the bike shop, and I, you know, I love bikes and, and, uh, and mezcal, I think it'd be a good pairing, and. Any, any questions or comments?
So, I, I do have a question, um, so, I, I can't remember where I saw it here, but there's an assembly space as well.
So, I, I do have a question. Um, so I can't remember where I saw it here, but there's an assembly space as well? Or is that just, uh, patron space that you're, uh, it said something like seventy-three people loud or something? Is it, are you, are you planning to have events there as well or?
Yeah, from time to time we would be doing, um, you know, like a, like a wedding party, like a, like a, like a dinner or something.
Sure.
Uh, where you bring in the caterers and people would rent the, the space for that. So it'd be, it'd mostly be, you know, the normal business as usual, with the exception of these particular parties.
Will you have food?
Uh, we will have snacks. You know, by lobby, we, we can't just have booze. Uh, we would need to have snacks and so we're looking to have, you know, chips and salsa, empanadas, case of block, things like that.
Paula, I have a question about, um, what is the reason that in this application we have the neighborhood is one-mile radius versus the entire town?
Uh, we changed that in ordinance about a year ago. It's a one-mile radius from the business location.
Right, which actually does usually take the entire town. Okay, so, right, good. Um, other questions or concerns? Nothing? Okay, so, so someone ready to make a motion with regard to this? Oh, public comment. Yeah, sorry about that. Okay, is there any comment from the public? Okay, uh, Brian, is there anybody on Zoom?
No hands raised?
I'll close public comment. Okay, um, any further discussion from the board? All right, uh, now is anyone ready to make a motion?
Make a motion to approve an application for a tavern liquor license for Coyote Mescalaria. He, I can say why? Located at eight oh one Front Loop, Unit One A, Vina Vista.
Is there a second?
One second.
Okay, so we have La Gracia and Row. To me.
I have a question.
Oh, please.
There was approved with amendments of it.
That's true.
The conditions, they made the Chaffey County Fire Protection District and the Chaffey County Building Department. And there's something about an executed revocable encroachment license agreement that was in there that I didn't hear any of us discuss. But, but they would have to meet those conditions, so we could approve it pending the approval of.
That's true. So, uh, it's a conditional, conditionally approve it. Pending approvals from Chaffey County Fire Protection District and Chaffey County Building Department and the executed revocable encroachment license agreement. So do you accept those amendments to your motion?
Yes.
And does the second?
Yes.
Okay, um, thank you Cindy. Further discussion, does anybody need to talk about the revocable encroachment license agreement? Okay.
Mayor, um, I could jump in for a second.
Yeah, thanks Jeff.
Yeah, no, you're welcome. You know, so I actually haven't worked directly on this, but typically that's what the town does when you, um, when a liquor licensee wants to have, uh, seating or something on, uh, a town right away, like the sidewalk. And so, um, I believe that's the case in this situation. They'd still need to get that permission from the town, which would, um, need to be done via, we have a standard agreement that we used in those situations, so, um, that's what we'd set up to do.
Okay, and it will still allow for pedestrian passage on that sidewalk?
Well, it should. I haven't looked at it. I haven't, uh, this is something I haven't seen directly, but I, yes, you definitely don't want to allow any sort of business to block the sidewalk, uh, the free flow of pedestrian traffic, so it generally have to be a, a limited area.
Okay. Can I, do you see a problem with that?
Steve, may I make a comment? The Black Girl Bikes has had the same exact seating lap for us, you know, five years or, or every moment in business uh, with the sidewalk seating and everything. So, we're, we're, because I'm a new business, I mean, I'm following that with an encroachment application and such. Um, so we're not really making a change per se, um, with the, it's been business as usual, just a, a different business, so to speak.
So it'll be the same kind of footprint.
Exactly.
And it's a, like a twelve-foot sidewalk or something. I don't know how big it is, but it's a very, very big sidewalk out there. Yeah, it's easy to walk through there.
Yeah.
It's usually two top tables out there. Wide space that people take up in the past, so.
Totally, we're planning to keep it that.
Yeah.
And it's revocable, so if there's an issue, we're voting.
Any further discussion? Thank you for bringing that up.
Thank you.
Um, okay, um, let's, uh, say all in favor of approving the license with the, uh, conditions as discussed.
I.
Anyone opposed? Can the motion passes? Great.
Thank you.
Congrats.
Thank you.
Okay. Along now to item D, which is the Arizona Street Trail and Bridge Project and the Colorado Department of Transportation grant. And I think this is probably Brian.
It is, um, you're, are all familiar with the Arizona, uh, Trail Bridge Pedestrian Bridge Project. Um, most recently, we discussed it in November after a competitive bid process included advertising on BitNet. And having quite, you know, local contractors aware of it, uh, one bid was submitted at that time, uh, one point seven, one point eight million over, uh, the budgeted funds, uh, which was just not feasible as we're we're right in the middle of going through the budget process and really prioritizing even ten thousand dollars at that point. Uh, since that time was basically, the direction at that time was have conversations with CDOT. What is it, what does this grant look like? Um, so a little bit of history on the grant, it was, uh, originated in two thousand twelve, uh, based on, uh, federal funds available at that time through CDOT. Uh, CDOT, a lot of their projects are rated twenty money. Um, at that time, the estimate was six hundred and eleven thousand dollars for the full project. Um, as it progressed over the next, uh, number of years, um, it got more complex. I think that's the biggest driver of it. Um, the project as designed included or entailed work in a floodplain, uh, work within a stream, uh, both, you know, have separate jurisdictions between FEMA, Corps of Engineers, uh, water and, uh, diversion and control to deepen the water main. Um, so we did have conversations with CDOT. They said that grant is due, that money has to be spent for that grant by September fifteenth of this year. Um, the plans as is were put out to bid twice and resulted in a number that was not feasible to conduct the project as designed. Uh, September fifteenth, when you're looking at a potential redesign, approval from CDOT, that component alone, um, out to bid and constructed is not doable either. Uh, so with the idea, conversations with CDOT, they said, uh, they did relay that if you're not able to use those funds in the scope, the approved scope of the current design, um, they did want to let us know that the funds would go back to, uh, the San Luis Valley TPR, uh, which is remain somewhat local rather than just back to the federal level. Um, and the town is also not responsible or obligated to repay the, uh, requisitions or reimbursements made to date on the grant. Uh, so that was promising. There's no kind of penalty, if you will, to get out of this. Uh, so, really, after those conversations with, uh, CDOT and as well as internally among staff, it's the recommendations basically to allow those funds to revert back to CDOT, uh, associated with a specific agreement number as identified in the motion. And then, from there, um, let the funds go back to CDOT. That gets us away from, uh, those requirements. Kind of taking the remaining budgeted funds, letting them go back to fund balance in the general fund and the street fund. If you remember, the one point two is basically consisted of three hundred and fifty-ish from the general fund, three hundred and fifty-ish from, uh, the street fund and then the remaining four hundred and fifty, uh, from the grant itself, so. The recommendation is basically that those funds fall back into fund balance. Uh, with the idea that we're going to go through a comp plan process, uh, of course, rec, master planning potentially and best case scenario, you get through the comp plan process, you identify through that process, hey, there's two or three projects that really rose to the top as priorities. People really want these two or three projects. Um, it'd be really nice to come right out of that process and say, yes, we have the money, let's knock these two or three off the list since they're identified as priorities, so, um, that's the recommendation. There's an example, motion for consideration, um, or you can kind of ask questions, I think. All the staff here has had exposure to it one way or another over the last
Ten, fifteen years?
Yeah.
Two of paper.
Yep.
Couple years, Doug?
And some of the land was donated by, by citizens.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think by Bob, right? Then we'd like to thank them for having made that contribution and, and hopefully we can pull this together in a modified form. Comments or questions from the trustees?
Uh, sorting it out with CDOT. Reverts.
Sorry. Expecting CDOT to allow us to not have to repay the design costs.
That was a, was a surprise. It was, uh, it was anticipated that we would owe further reimbursement. We had done, uh, so far to date, uh, since the project didn't get to completion, if you will. Uh, I think they see it as an understanding that it, there may be a need to kind of reevaluate it, uh, as far as the design. And so, I think they have the understanding and with the comp plan, you know, I've read all these different plans over the last six months or so. It's called, there's a one line on one map of one plan that actually identifies this anywhere and, uh, it's not called out specifically as a priority, uh, by any means. It's in the trails, uh, plan. There's conceptual lines on the map and it does include this location, but that's about the extent of it. So I think if we go through the process and there's probably, most likely it will be called out again somewhere down the line. Uh, we have a lot of good information between right away and land and, uh, know where easements are and, uh, where the floodplain boundaries are, uh, that will be instrumental and kind of looking at redesign to get out of the floodplain, to not mess in the creek and look at it in that perspective. And that money that CDOT provided helped facilitate identifying where those floodlines are. Uh, and so I think there's benefit that they probably saw.
So, so in their view, they see this, this, there, there's still value from what they contributed and, you know, I think just take, CDOT gets a bad rap and I think we should say thank you.
Well, also, I mean, in your memo, it mentions that, you know, this money will go back potentially to the San Luis Valley uh, transportation planning and so, which obviously we're part of, so it's come around and benefited us in another way, so. I don't know. Seems like this works out in a positive way after all, so.
Any other comments?
No, I'll, I'll just add though, I, like, we did, and I said this every time it comes up, I guess, but like, I, I'd say we make that trip about three times a month or so, or four times a month maybe, of trying to cross that area, cause, you know, going from farms like South Main or something and, yeah, at nighttime, especially over that bridge, it's it's tough. So, I know it hasn't been mentioned anywhere, but I think especially if there's more development on outside from homestead and farm or anything else that I see even more of a need, so.
Yeah, I would concur. I watch that area probably a couple times a week and it is, uh, a little bit treacherous.
Especially there's ice on that bridge. Especially there's ice on that bridge and trying to like
Right.
run across because a car just came around or.
Yeah, yeah.
So, uh, the motion that I'd like for someone to make, if you look at the bottom of page eighty-five of your packet, there's a motion for consideration. And if you agree with that motion, uh, you could make it.
I'll make a motion to approve the funds associated with the CDOT agreement number twenty-two HA five dash XC dash zero 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 four six to revert back to CDOT and the remaining town funds budgeted in twenty twenty-four revert to fund balance, allowing for increased capacity and implementing priorities identified through the twenty twenty-four comprehensive plan update. Second.
Thank you. So we have Row and Rice. All in favor? Or we probably should do a roll call on this, I think. Um, would you call the roll, please Paula?
Trustee Cobb.
Yes.
Trustee Hilton Higa.
Yes.
Trustee LaCretzi.
Yes.
Trustee Rice.
Yes.
Trustee Row.
Yes.
And Trustee Swisher.
The motion passes. Thanks to everybody for all these many, many years of trying to get this project completed.
Right, for working with CDOT to kind of come to this point.
It'll happen someday. One name after to tell. The Joel Benson Memorial Bridge.
You don't like the Aquaman?
Yeah, we'll have a picture of it, or like a statue of it. Aquaman on the bridge. Bringing the town together.
Okay, um, staff reports. So, um, we'll begin with the police chief. Dean, are you out there?
I sure am. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry. Yeah, I'll just go through my report real quick. I know it's been a very busy night for everyone. Um, I, uh, first thing I have listed there is a send-off for Officer England. Um, he'll be moving on to, uh, New Horizons, so best wishes to him. We had a send-off for him, uh, last Wednesday. Um, we're also losing another officer in June, so that's gonna just make for a very, uh, busy summer for our officers being short-staffed like that. Um, last week I attended the BOCC meeting, uh, referencing EDM concert that's being planned for September. And there's a follow-up meeting for that on the nineteenth, which I hope to attend as well. Uh, just an update for our code enforcement testing. Uh, we had three applicants and, um, we did an initial testing process and they all passed that. So, uh, they've moved on to the background investigation phase, so once they get those, uh, background packets in and we're able to conduct the backgrounds, hopefully we can get an applicant. Um, we, we got, uh, three very good applicants, so I'm hopeful. Um, Chris and Megan, Sergeant Roversars and Sergeant Mitchell, they'll be headed Supervisor School next week. So we're excited, um, to get them back training and, um, let's see, this Monday, this past Monday? I think so, yeah. Um, I had a forensics class at the Vina Vista High School. They invited me to come talk to them, so that was great. It's always fun to go on and talk to the kids and, uh, one of us usually does that a couple times a year. Um, last week at our team meeting, Sol Vista was there and we did some training on our mental health issues, um, and the co-response program. Um, I was in another meeting today with Sol Vista and part of the Rockies and also the Regional Assessment Center. Um, just talking about issues related to mobile response and resources. Um, and there's a lot of really, uh, smart, dedicated people, uh, bringing some great resources in that area to the county. Um, also at our team meeting, we discussed officer wellness and, um, Investigator Lee has taken a role as a wellness coordinator and giving officer. As a wellness coordinator and giving officers a lot of resources related to uh, issues as far as uh, stress on the job and things like that. Um, tomorrow's our PT day, so. Some of us will be doing the physical fitness challenge in the morning and then the night shift, they'll be coming in early to do it in the afternoon. And then I have an emergency services meeting, uh, this coming Thursday, so that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Are you gonna include, um, the administrator in the PT testing, is that tomorrow?
It is, yep, he will be joining us, so. Uh, we gotta go home and get our rest, I guess.
Questions for the police chief?
Yeah, I have a question, uh. It was great last year to meet the correspondent, um, who works in the county. Um, is it still only one single person, nine to five, Monday through Friday, or has there been additional coverage at all?
Um, yeah, I, I know they're looking to hire more people, but they look at the. Um, calls for service and things like that, so it's hard for them to justify adding more. So the one you met, she has taken the role as supervisor. Um, and I believe there is one or maybe two other mobile response individuals. Um, but the lady you met, Sarah Briggs, she still comes out quite a bit on top of also helping to supervise. And, um, last week she was up in our area. And, um, we gave her space in the department, um, so she just worked out of our building most of the day, which was nice, so. If something that did come up, um, we had the co-responder right here working with us, so.
That's great to have that space in the building to have have them up here, um. I think it's, at some point, I'd love to have this come up at intergovernmental meeting. Because I feel like this is something that happens with all the agencies, so.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
Yeah, the next one's in April, but I think that'd be a great thing to look at with the other. Other municipalities, just see how it's going and get a presentation going, but that's my idea of that.
Brian, could you add that to a potential agenda?
When's the next one, end of April? April thirty, I think, so some of us won't be there, some are questionable.
Thank you, Dean.
Thank you.
Ask for Chief? Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Now we're back to Joel, running director of work.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, Trustees, um, you have my report. Uh, it's been a busy, busy month with all kinds of development activity going on, uh, with. Including with a quarter request, we had to stop and do some Colorado Open Records Act, find some. Documentation for a little while, uh, working on that top side annexation preparation. Um, there's, just had another, uh, meeting, well. I have a meeting coming up with a major subdivision, um, there was one yesterday for another major subdivision. Um, there's a few properties that have four or five lots that they've. Got leveled and taken to in or taking a building out, they want to do some work on that, and so we're figuring out some public improvements and things. Uh, so it's been real busy, lots of temporary vendors are flooding in and sign permits and. Liquor permit things and all kinds of stuff, building permits, so. Uh, good, a good staff and they work hard, which is fantastic, um. Boulders, everything is in process, uh, so I'm gonna pull them from the planning report because the building permits are done. Public Works still gets to, uh, help them out, which is great, uh. Some of the other projects have sort of, they're just in their various stages of. Uh, working, you know, uh, we're waiting on applicants or bringing in another. Uh, sets of responses to the referral comments. Apparently, um, crossing should be moving forward pretty soon. There is a part in the code about minor and major site plans that are under review and the trustees can call those up. In order to review them, um, and so I put a little spot in here that we're none at the point of. Letting you know what they are, um, but I'm gonna start putting them in here because the trustees can say, hey, actually, we want to see those. Staff can recommend it, but you guys can call them up, but if you don't know that they exist, it's hard to. So. Um, comp plan, March eighteenth, so on Monday, we're getting, uh. You know, RFPs back, excited to see what happens there, you'll see, uh. Phil pulled some data based on tap fees, uh, billing permits, so single family ADU commercial. You can see quite a, a jump in the, the figure one there. Um, over the years in the last, it's twenty eighteen, there's been a considerable growth and last year we had a hundred fifteen, so. Which is.
New record.
New record.
Both that Joel brings is a, that one fifteen, would that be like carbonate or something like, like big? Projects are out of the norm, or is that just?
No, uh, carbonate wasn't officially approved. Trying to think if that actually happened in January.
Carbonate wasn't paid for, so.
Okay.
My big job, yeah, is the first tranche of the boulders. And the boulders is forty-five, single family and forty-five ADUs, and so there's a big spike. Right at the end as far as payment for eighteen and eighteen. So it's skewed a little bit, uh, twenty nineteen, if you start to dig into it, uh. The farm, uh, stuff like that, um, so when subdivisions get their structure done, you'll see those spikes. Um, twenty twenty-four, when we first put it together, um. That'd probably be a new record. Uh, second tranche of, uh, the boulders and carbon tree, if you break them down per unit, uh.
Yeah, yeah, there were, uh, at least November and December, ten and ten for the farm. You know, so it's twenty there plus carbon or boulders. And some of those can go pretty quickly if it's the same basic. Plan, the same designer, the same set plats, you know, that we can review pretty quickly. Anyway.
Pretty striking trend line.
Yeah. So, um, thanks to Philip and Brian for helping put that together. Uh, the commission, you guys had any, any thoughts on the candidates for, um. Planning Zone Commission?
Like great candidates.
I really appreciated Andrew's comment, I was gonna ask that if he weren't, so I was like, well, somebody's on that. Where is the line drawn if they were to. Create a project or be involved in something, so I thought that was a very good question and so. I don't know if there is a policy, but should there be, or maybe there shouldn't, I don't know, but just having that awareness, so.
I think they'd be responsible to recuse them.
I would just.
Without a change in policy.
These are two often, yeah. So, um, I don't hear any big objections, so put it on the consent agenda. For next, uh, the next meeting, and if you all wanna remove it, discuss it off the consent agenda, that's fine.
It's really nice to get to see.
Yeah, it was like, wow.
Yeah, thanks for bringing that up.
That you're interested in just having some joint meetings, you can talk around for them, but, um, just.
If you can count.
I can. I can comment probably too, maybe. No, I just appreciate that, uh, you know, that there'll be more interaction.
Um. HPC code clarification, anyway, water, we did a lot of water talk this evening, um. I do have one other item that wasn't here, but I sent you guys a separate email about it, this is just a little FYI on. Tribeview, revegetation plan, so the, you know, we've been working with Tribeview for. At least two plus years on, um. With the Chicago Ranch acquisition with the recreational master plan for that, the rodeo grounds and. Coming up with how to, um, revegetate when they pull that water off. Um, so we have a, uh, the Water Court, their court case is, I, I told you, we were gonna stipulate, I told you last meeting. Um, part of that has to do with the revegetation plan, we've hired, uh, you know, Cindy Cabell. Um, and then we had Sarah Franz, who's an outside consultant, who's been working with revegetation plan. We, uh, worked with Tribeview extensively and coming up with a suitable plan. And then we kicked it over with the county, because whatever. We want, whatever the county wants, we want to make sure we're working together on that. Um, and so we incorporated a bunch of other stuff with the county and we're, we've come to this. Agreement, e- essentially, you know, I'm, hey, we're all okay with this revegetation plan, and so, um. Wanted you to know, um, I can send you, anyone, the plan, um, as proposed, because it won't be officially. Approved until the annexation agreement, it's an appendix to the annexation. Okay, the county is on board, Tribe is on board, our town folk are on board. Um, and, uh, it took a long time.
Yeah.
And a lot of, a lot of meetings, you know, with a lot of different people, so it's a fantastic. Effort from, uh, Cindy Cabell and Sarah France and the other, other folk who've been involved. Um, in Tribeview, et cetera, so. Um, and the county, because the county had outside consultants, take a look at it as well. So it's been people who know revegetation have looked at it. Anyway, so just letting you know that this is here and it will, will be wrapped into this annexation agreement. When that comes forward, assuming it's not too far off. Is anything else to add on that, Brian?
It's a good read.
Joel, thanks for the reminder, I saw that you had sent that, so thank you.
And the, that actually tells us the, what you can send us shows the steps they're taking to revegetate it. So it's like the, might be a boring read, but I'm curious.
It's, it's not prescriptive as in they will do this and then they will do this and they will do this, uh. Because you don't know what the variables are gonna do, you know, uh, so one year you might need to oversee. And another year it wouldn't be appropriate, you know, and that could, so, so it's not prescriptive, but it is, uh. By such and such a year, there's gonna be a certain percentage of, um, native. Vegetation, when, what is native, that there's a definition. And there's gonna be such and such a percentage, uh, max allowed year one, reducing, uh. Noxious weeds and that reduces, uh, non-noxious weeds that are weeds.
They're planning to dry it up before revegetating, or are they gonna revegetate it before they dry it up, so I.
They'll, they'll pull the water off and. Yeah, they'll pull it off and then work on the revegetation plan, which at some point may include adding some additional water. Depending on how things are going. And there's, uh, they're gonna have some. Uh, detention ponds out there, you know, for recharge, um, and then there's some stipulations what that looks like for weed control things as well. And then there's what is, what was wet irrigated and what is the dry? Are they responsible for the stuff that's been dried for twenty years on that Chicago ranch?
The town, at the end of the day, it'll be released kind of in. Segments, if you will, and the town is the one that will issue certificate of completion, um. So it's, as, yeah, if you're interested, uh, feel free to reach out and get a copy of it, it's. Kinda interesting read, um, and. It's gonna be a long process, um, they really think ten to twelve years is gonna be closely monitored. Um, with set standing meetings, um, in the spring, kind of, uh. Look meandering, uh, site visits, um. Just walk around the property, take a look and then kind of, uh, end of year recap, so it's. Three or four standing meetings every year, uh, with Tribeview Town Representatives and others, uh, for the next ten or so years.
Is there any type of like a, a, a bond release upon a certificate of completion?
Um, I have to, I know there's some kind of, um. Uh, some clause in there, I haven't read the final, what the clause is, but something about, um. They can't have all their water until, like it's all.
That's, yeah.
Because a lot of times, you know, construction contracts have a performance bond that is released upon a certificate of completion, so that there's, there's skin in the game until it's finished. That's water, that, that concept is, is baked into this.
Cool. And at the end of the day, since it was associated, it's actually probably got more teeth than if it was just an annexation agreement. Uh, any future. Uh, conflict or dispute actually is handled at Water Court. That will be the court that hears any type of dispute.
And this is part of that Water Court. And it has more teeth than if it was just the Water Court, like the Water Court revegetation plan wouldn't have been this severe. Protected.
That's often the subject, a different subject now.
Just gonna say really good work to you and Cindy and Sarah and. Um, Catherine, whole, whole gang, that's, I mean, I know, I remember it's been going on for a long time, so.
That's, that's really all I had to share on my plan, so.
Yeah, but so this is actually for you and Sean, I guess, and Brian a little bit, but, uh, I just kinda wanted to follow up, you mentioned your memo about top side. You know, we had a three-hour meeting at this last session, and I know it's only been two weeks, but, uh. At least my takeaway from that to certain extent was, hopefully there'd be more collaboration, communication. Coordination to get on the same page, just wondering how that's going, if they reach out, you guys are kinda, uh, not specifics. Just if you guys are kind of hammering some stuff out and figuring things out or.
Sure, yeah, so last week we met, um, and we put together a long list of questions. Um, mostly from the trustee input, um, in public hearing, as well as some other questions that we had. Um, to pose to them, how would you handle this and have you thought, what is, what's your commitment for X or Y, et cetera? Um, and we met last Wednesday. We had two hours with their representatives and two of the owners and their attorney. Um, and they received that list and they're providing responses by Monday. That we can then work into a, um, memo for you all for the March twenty-sixth meeting in time for the packet. Um, and. I think they're even working on a draft, uh, new water, uh, excuse me, annexation agreement that would. Incorporate some of their commitments and, um, some language about phasing and some other things, so it was, I thought it was probably the more productive. Uh, time that we've had with it, um. Last week, so we'll see what their responses are.
It's great, have you heard anything about the traffic, why they chose center instead of. Constabulary, they said they're gonna look into that and get back to us, I don't know if they got back to us.
We highlighted that as one of the items to look at. And we posed the question actually in person as we kind of walked them through some of the questions, uh. They said, yes, they will, they will address it, but they hadn't had a clear answer yet.
Hey, thank you, Joel. Lots of activity. And Sean?
Thanks, everyone, uh, my report's on page ninety-five of the packet. I kinda wanted to go backwards, but I, that's kinda silly, but it kind of seemed rushed to the things that you guys, but I'll, I'll start from top. Get stuck with water too much, I wanna make sure I, I talk about a few things that better in my report. Um, yeah, so it sounds like a few of you, maybe all of you are aware that we did prepare rather largely, um, yesterday, so, um. Our location was, um, kind of within the CDOT right away, near Jan's, come back in their front yard. Uh, their sidewalk had to be removed, we were right next to the highway and, um, pretty preliminary, but, uh. You know, with, you know, it's barely, you know, a little over twenty-four hours since we've done that, uh, Joe. Last, you know, we were, he's already turned the water down about seventy-five gallons a minute, so. Uh, we were at three hundred gallons a minute, and so he's, he's knocked it down about seventy-five gallons a minute. You know, we'll, we'll see with the trends too, but I, I think that was, um, probably. I, I think that was probably, you know, pretty significant leak, probably have the bulk of our account gone there, kind of did some quick math on that and, you know, it looks like, you know, taking that leak out of the equation, our account is probably more like 19% right now. So that's actually a pretty good number for this time of year when you consider that most of our registered entry meters, you know, are, are kind of, when we add up the meters monthly, you know, that, that are registered but are accounted for, you know, trip that 1,000 gallons, you know, every time a trip. So it, it, it looks like it's going to be pretty, pretty helpful moving forward. So fantastic news. Well, you know, we, we kind of worked with staff and we, we also worked with Al Smith with Swiftwater. We, we were looking for some leak detection consultants to give us a hand with this and, you know, we just kind of saw the resources and our equipment. So Joe and his team were able to kind of, you know, kind of verify that they were maybe getting something over here. Let's look at a little bit closer. Al took our correlating equipment and Aaron and Fox helped him with some of the placements and some of the valve backing and, and getting the pods put in so we can correlate and we wound up back there. So Swiftwater Solutions has brag and rise that they're 100% successful at this point for leak detection. So I, I mean, it's the only one they've done, so. It's pretty cool, pretty cool to, to work with the people that I get to work with, Joe's teams, fantastic.
The big leak, it's easy to find big leaks, right?
You know, you know, we saw that on account for quite a while, right? You know, we, we, that was the fourth leak that we fixed probably since November, somewhere in there. When we started working on San Juan and, and Yale Place. You know, a couple of the leaks that we fixed, we wound up actually turning the water up after we fixed the leak. So, you know, this was kind of like, hey, Joe, did you have to turn the water? It was like, no, 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 we had to turn it down. So that's, that's, yeah, it's, it's interesting, but the, you know, but we're not done. So, you know, we talked, crewed up Joe and Al and, you know, we're moving Al to ID leak next. And I, I think that we'll, you know, kind of keep looking, you know, at our system just the same, but kind of feel like given the time of year, you know, that we're in, that, you know, we're probably under 20%. More than likely, if we retain this, we'll, we'll be looking pretty good once we start actually making more water. Our, you know, I'd like to get back down. We had a pretty good year and a half run where our account was like, you know, 12, 15%. Hopefully we can get back to that, you know, that's, that's the goal. So, yeah, we'll, we'll we'll take the way while we can. I appreciate everybody's time. It was great to see trustee Rice out there. Yeah, appreciate it. It's, it's fantastic to, to be there. It was, I have more videos, so if you'd like to see the video of that leak, I'd like to share with the, with the group. Pretty fantastic. We'll, we'll reach out to the local community a little bit more. I'd like to kind of share a little bit more with Chippina Times, I know Max was invested in, in, in a story earlier this year and we wanted to follow up with them. Yesterday was just extremely busy. We were putting Saint Power Pools out of the meadow for the infiltration project and we were just, we were just really, really, really extremely busy yesterday. Along with, you know, the, the other kind of reactive kind of things that happen throughout the day from time to time. But yeah, so that's, that's planned, jumping to ID leak next with Val and see what we can do there. Already reached out with them. Yeah, the talk a little bit about the water treatment plant project. So pretty short and sweet here. I mean, I think the big thing right now is, you know, Rice Leg is working on the building expansion. We're getting the components, everything. There's so many parks and pubs and, and including generation stations, you know, inside the building, but you know, we're, we're working on that with them. JHL has caught up with everything. We're, we're waiting for the, the RV Corps for, for permit for the pre crossing. And hopefully we have that within the next, you know, two, two, three weeks and we're able to make that crossing. They're going to have to pull off next week. They, they, they're just, they're done until we can do that. So that's, that's good news. That's a testament to their work that, you know, they, they're, they're a fantastic contractor. They've done an amazing job while they've been there, but now we need to get that pre crossing for them to stay, stay productive.
Is that going to cost us money if they have to pull out and then come back?
It's probably going to cost us money for them to remove and demo. One good thing that I don't have, we do have a credit of $25,000 on our electrical. So not to say that, you know, we'll have that benefit, but at least we have a little bit of a buffer there, so. Yeah. We applied for that permit in December, so that's crime department's bad.
That was a very sensitive.
Not, not a natural, but it's not an opportunity that we work with that, 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 you know, we rely on. They're just, this, this country's just really, really busy right now, so. Anyways, there's not a lot of meat in the water conservation plan meeting agenda. I just wanted to make sure we created some awareness of what we're doing there. I think Al's got a second set of some bills coming out this week. I think once we start getting a little bit more, I need to get this incorporated to my staff report or maybe even agenda. I see, I see what the progress looks like as we move forward with. Al joked with me yesterday after we fixed the leak and he's like, do we still need a conservation? Yes, we do, yeah. Developments, yeah, same stuff there. Just a little bit more of a awareness of our street projects that, that is out to bid right now. So we're advertising currently for that project, two weeks. We'll keep you posted on that. I, I added a couple a few images for this amazing place, the outside. Wanted to kind of, kind of talk a little bit about what some of the ideas that we have, you know, staff lights. You know, maybe do some demonstration gardens and maybe do some demonstration turf on, on this side of the building, on the south side of the building. So if we do some things that kind of, kind of help our community or help people kind of recognize, you know, if we maybe do a small turf area with grass, maybe identify like what the soil composition is for making it more water conscious or water, water efficient, you know, things like that. Or maybe a different blend, but those are some of the things that I think we can incorporate here to create, you know, kind of a form and function in a water wise place, I think on the east side of the building underneath the pine trees. You know, there's really no reason to try to compete with the pH balance with what the pine trees are doing to the soil. So we'll go zero there and create some nice, you know, textures. And once we get more conceptual things, I'll keep dropping in some pictures. I think this is probably one of the projects we want to try to focus on completing, you know, probably before we get too busy. June, something like that. So along with this one and then the cemetery fence project, those are the two things that you know, really want to implement with our parks team and Allison has some great ideas. I think, you know, our parks department's got a lot of talent there. But yeah, those are pretty cool opportunities to have with that. Rodeo Browns repair, I think we're going to tackle that. We have the engineer report, we know how to fix it. We have, we have a Mark Warner, we have a Joe P. Jewish, Sean Ditchey. We got Brian, you know, I think, I think we're going to go ahead and tackle that. We're, we're having a hard time getting responses locally to, to see if there's somebody there that would help us with the rehabilitation. Basically what we're looking at, calling those post columns is what they are. And so the engineering reports basically cut supplies, put it in the post column underneath it and bolted in together. I think the tricky part is pulling our tongue right to make a, make a good cut to where it's kind of an L shape on the bottom, tying it to an L shape on the top, squeezing the other, both of the others. So I think that's something that we're going to tackle next week. We're working on getting hardware assembled. But yeah, I think, I think it's something within our wheelhouse. As long as we have an AJA stamp on it and what we'll do is we'll bring JBA back in to do the evaluation once repairs done. Make sure that at least they're satisfaction, we did it correctly. Public Works Cleanup Weekend, May 17th and 18th is coming quick. Advisory Board, some of the projects that we're doing. That last meeting that we had when Al presented the conservation plan, we also had Providence up and they presented hydraulic modeling presentation to the Water Advisory Board. So we received a proposal from Providence. So really what, what it is, it's, it's basically a it's basically a, our system map digitized with the ability to calculate volumes of water and pipe sizes and impacts that like maybe top side might have. So if we have a 12 inch main running to that location, top side comes in, puts a connection on there, gives us their SFEs. We're able to look at our water mix to see what the flows are, see if there's any impacts there or just to make sure that, you know, maybe there's not additional piping that would be required, you know, for that development to, to install. She said the pipes were too small. We might not know that, you know, without this kind of data. Appreciate Brian. Brian did this with Poncha. I think Andrew's got some awareness of this. Some of the work that he did as a private consultant in the past life. I think it looks fantastic. So what I'd like to do is do it to the Water Advisory Board and do the proposal to the Water Advisory Board for the recommendation of the quarter. This, this is a low enough price that we don't have to advertise for it, but it's but it's also something that, you know, I think we want to talk about a little bit more once we meet with the Water Advisory Board, kind of maybe come back to this group with a more of a comprehensive or the, you know, you know, in-depth kind of a presentation of what that looks like. So I think that is something that we have budgeted for, for, for 2024 as well, so. Yeah.
I noticed you've had some tree removals, one by Crave and, and another over on Rodeo.
Yeah, yeah, so the, we're doing the tree inventory, right? That software that we, that we purchased last year and that we, that we're continuing to use this year. So, yeah, we found a cottonwood tree at the intersection of West Main Street and Rodeo Road that you could stick your arm in. And so we, we found it before it found us, so that on, that on the team. So we, we really didn't have a choice. You know, we, we moved that cottonwood and get it down before it fell off. It was just a matter of time before it was going to probably yeah, tip over and fall one way or the other during this highway. So and then the, the one at Crave, yeah, I really wanted to save it. But when we removed the concrete, so that was a pretty bad location for a trip hazard.
That little brick thing.
It was just kind of pushing the sidewalk up and then where the ribbon is, it was detached as well. And so they had a couple of different, depending on which way you wanted to walk right there, you're going to trip up or something. So we, we kind of did a, a bay date on it last fall and got the sidewalk pulled out. The ashtray was pretty, so it's an ash tree is what it is and the roots are just, you know, they're just right too close to the top. So I mean, we could, could have probably, you know, maybe cut some of the roots out. Might have become unstable, but it might not have had as a desired useful life for the sidewalk. I think it probably was going to, would have started moving pretty quickly. So I think those trees on Main Street, they just have to be replaced from time to time. And, you know, they're pretty big and so, you know, we've replaced a few of the trees over the years. We had an Arbor Day project, it was last year or the year before, that we're replacing the trees with the tree board and, you know, and that one there, it's just, yeah, I think it's just kind of outgrown the, the site we intended, you know, the, the planner that was there. I think what we need to do, and I don't really want to remove it, but we, we need to move across the street now. Porch and Splash Park, there's a big cottonwood there. There's some serious trip hazards where the ribbon's kind of buckling and where the sidewalk's kind of moving. And then the Zurich Garden, the, the modular stone planter that we have there on the edge of the sidewalk behind the fire pit, that's actually starting to bow. So the trees probably, you know, maybe one of my favorite trees in town. It, it's, you know, so I think what we wanted to kind of look at is maybe an opportunity to maybe do a big design there to see if we can save it and, and maybe do, because the Splash Park is town property, we have an opportunity to kind of kind of move, move the foot traffic maybe off the sidewalk area and maybe do something a little bit more creative with that tree. But, you know, we'll, we'll lean on, on our experts and on our team and our advisory boards to kind of help with that. We do have an arborist with staff. I think there's a chance that we can probably save that, but there's, there's a few trip hazards here and there. So that's, anyways, that's probably the next one that we, that we're looking at down there. Yeah, I kept the ash tree, so as, as long of a piece as I, as I could. I don't have any ideas for it, but if you have any ideas or if you know it's somebody that would be interested in a nice long you know, trunk of ash, it might be somebody that might want it, so.
Did you get a permit for each tree too?
Good.
Yeah, I think, I think Public Works between the tree trimming projects that we, that we worked on with consultants and some of the kind of work that we've done, I think maybe we've, maybe we've done maybe four or five permits somewhere up there.
We've done very well.
We're getting it down. I think we, I think we know what the three D teams. It's a good thing.
It is. Great, okay. Thank you, Sean. Anything else for Sean?
I didn't get to see the leak fixed.
What was that?
How come Andrew got to go watch? Or did you just uninvited show up?
My neighbor, I think he saw the trailer or the cones. I don't know. He was just there. Al's my neighbor and Al told me, he's like, we got a big one. And I said, I, I need to come see it. So I got my, my heart hat and my vest and I went to go see it.
Give me a call too.
Next big one. Yeah, I mean, it, it, next time we should, y'all really should. I mean, what those guys do is is thankless, man.
Yeah, I'd love to see it.
Joe's holding the bucket down on it and it's blowing out of there, what, 60 or 70 PSI? It's going maybe 70, 50, 75 gallons a minute. You know, if he makes one wrong move and it's just falling in his face and it's, yeah, I mean, challenge team, those guys do it thankless. So if I get wind of it again, I'll let some folks know.
What's that?
I stopped and said, thank you.
Yeah, I said, you're appreciated.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, you know, from my perspective, it's fantastic to see Andrew there, you know, and Brian. I just, I mean, it was probably like almost six o'clock and Brian said, I'm going to be stopped because we're still out there. It's, it's
Let me point out one more thing too. You could just turn the water lines off on the entire four sides and just shut part of that town down and just do the water line without a leak, you know? So you put a lot of people out of water. It makes the, that would make their job a lot easier in the short run. But then when you turn it back on, you have to flush all the lines and recording testing, take bacteria testing. So in the end, it's a big headache, but what they do is they, there's no impact other than Janes has a hole out front. The way they do this job is a major hassle, but it keeps the town, it, it, there's minimal impact to town residents with water supply. So they deserve a big thanks for it.
Yeah, good. Thank you. Okay, trustee staff interaction. Let's, let's start with Sue since this is her last meeting of being actually present.
Yeah, I was actually here. I'm here.
You got one more?
March 26th?
Yeah, two more.
Two more, okay. I'm starting with you anyway.
Everyone's trying to get rid of us, Peter. I don't really
You put me on an island over here.
You sit at the table. I think it's power.
But I'm happy to go first, I mean, so. One thing, the only thing I really wanted to ask about is that I learned yesterday or maybe before that professionally directed spending opportunities are open, have opened up and is there spot, I mean, is there pending, this is from Pick 'em Lovers, Pick 'em Lovers office that they're open now and they, I think that were due to March 29th, right?
I think it's the 19th.
I thought it was the 29th, but I, I can check, but at any rate. And I don't know what we're considering, if anything, there. One thing that comes to mind We're considering if anything there. One thing that comes to mind to me, just my time on the airport borders, that Fuel Island. Don't know if if this is the year or that's the priority project. So I didn't really wanna. Go anywhere with that. But one of their staff folks, I used to work with Hickenlupper, and so they've just, you know, connected with me. But one of their staff folks is probably. Their alamo's a person, Azrael, whom I think we all met with last year. She was gonna check in with me tomorrow and I'm obviously not gonna speak on behalf of the town. But I wanted to open it up to this group and see what people already might be working on or thinking about.
The Fuel Island one's not a bad idea. It's something that's gotta going to have to happen.
Right.
We don't have it necessarily, the funding sources figured out yet.
Right.
Um, you know, the idea with the congressional, the last round. Um, you know, one point two eight six million towards carbon industry. It's gonna be, it's gonna be awesome. But a year after application. Kind of is like, all right, well, awesome, but now how do we actually make this work? I mean, it was a year ago. We never heard anything because the budget got delayed because of what's going on at federal level. But now we. At we were to a point where we said, we're gonna break ground in April.
Yeah.
Right? And so now coming in and saying, okay, these are hedge funds, housing, urban development funds. What comes with those?
Yeah.
Right? And most likely, probably an additional environmental assessments as there are federal funds. Um that's not getting done in the next two weeks. Um so how do we even now incorporate them into this project? Is gonna be curious. So the fact that we just got awarded something awesome, um if there was one to throw at, I would think. Actually, Fuel Island isn't a bad one.
And and I know we applied for something along those lines last year, but I don't know whether it was, I don't think it was with Peterson's office. I'm just, I think it was Hickenlupper Bennett. And so Jack and Chandler might know more about that and maybe others here do too. But uh anyways. That's just a thought. And yeah, and I think we didn't get it last year, obviously. So I'm not sure what we need to change.
Well, Peterson's office has invited us to apply also.
Okay, I thought it was.
Yeah, for twenty five fiscal year twenty five is what.
Okay.
What he was talking about today when I spoke with him.
For Fuel Island?
Uh well, I wasn't talking with him about that specifically, but I think that's a great idea.
Okay.
Another idea along Fuel Island, I don't know if this is called or not, but the. Uh because to your point, I think it's, you kind of want to apply for things that are gonna be down the road. Maybe so you could plan for it. It's possibly the Boys and Girls Club. Um because that one's gonna still be further down the line and I know they still. More millions after raised, but.
Four or five million.
Do we get from them last year for Hickenlupper for, because we we applied last year to for Boys and Girls Club to the same. Same one you're bringing up right now, but last year, I don't know. I thought we got something.
There's a half a million dollar grant associated with Boys and Girls Club.
That's probably it. So there's no reason we can't do more.
Yeah, she's got uh some transportation, housing and urban development.
Yeah.
And related agencies. That would be transportation, I would think, Fuel Island.
Yeah.
So. How do we go about deciding, you know, putting in these applications for grants?
Uh. I'm always a strong proponent of. Having.
Matthew.
Having a project and finding funding rather than finding funding and then or having funding than finding a project. Um the Fuel Islands on the the Airport Five Year Capital Improvement Plan. As well as the Town's Five Year Capital Improvement Plan. So it seems appropriate to go kind of. Things that are established, um and knowing that the. Airport Fuel Island is going to be kind of a tough nut to crack. C dot will provide some funds. Um but we're still gonna have to come up with probably a good chunk of money. To be able to make that come to fruition. I think this is a good avenue. So probably be worthwhile to have conversation at some point. It's not gonna happen tonight or in time for that grand application. But to have a list so that when these come around and says, yeah, they're due back by.
Yeah.
Next Tuesday, we say, we look at the list and there it is. Uh probably be worthwhile to invest some time, put together that list for these type of things.
I have another one here, um which is from um the people who've been working on the Places to Age. And um they are asking for a letter of support from the town for their application. Uh for a six million dollar grant to help with the uh infrastructure necessary to go. Um to the property. They've they've had a a donation of ten acres of property. Um but there's gonna be a pretty hefty infrastructure cost to, this is down at Salida, not here. Um to uh um, you know, to get the infrastructure built. And. So it'd be good if uh if we could uh approve our sending a letter of support. Um for them applying for this grant. That's that's all that would be required from us if if we could. Have this letter of support. We could write it up, you know, for next meeting.
So could I make a motion that we send a letter supporting them?
That'd be great. Okay, so we have Swisher and Cobb. For the motion to uh approve a letter of support for the Places to Age group applying for congressional grant. All in favor? Anyone opposed? Thank you.
But I did just always check my email and the deadline is twenty ninth, yeah.
I checked too, it's a.
So here we have like.
You get one extra week. Well, that's how the Patterson thing came through already. Turn it around.
Yeah, that was in two days. So.
It's not impossible.
And I mean, and they may have some boilerplate from the last grant, so.
Andrew? Hey Cindy? Yeah, Sean?
Um no, I, yeah, just one quick observation. Uh JT Schaper is here, spoke. Um um it's really cool to see, so when I first started in this position in two thousand and sixteen seventeen. JT was our state forester. So it's fantastic to see his journey. It's fantastic to see the institutional knowledge that this generation's bringing. Our area. So that was pretty special.
He's got seen it.
Eric, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah, for the uh staff trustee interactions, um I I do feel it's important to bring something up, um references concert that's coming up. In um September. Um and and I think it's just worth pointing out some things about special events in general. Um as we go into the summer seasons, um strictly from a public safety standpoint. Um this concert is not in our jurisdiction, but it will still affect us. I just wanted to mention a couple of things about that. Um we're still a small town and we're still a small department. And there's two concert events back to back that are gonna bring in people into the town equal to the county's population. Uh one of my takeaways from the B O C C meeting, um the sheriff, the undersheriff. And um Josh Hadley with Chaffey County EMS spoke that this uh second concert is gonna be a real strain on first responders. Um they're having to cancel vacations. They're scheduling guys to work twelve days straight. And this comes after a a busy season where first responders have already been working events like this all summer long. One of the ways I'm concerned it's going to affect us is the day this event ends, um the next day we have our community dinner. And we rely on some help from the sheriff's office and Chaffey EMS to help make that happen. So now there's gonna be even more of an ask from those guys to, you know, help us with that event so we can do it safely. Um as you look at our staff reports and some of the types of calls we're dealing with. Um I I just want the public and I guess the leadership in the town and the in the county to kind of consider what. Is being asked of our first responders, um because public safety has to come first. And the last thing I would say is, I talked to the rec department and the town of Vienna Vista this year, I was told so far has one hundred thirteen. Special events and the list is growing. Um so just keep in mind that this type of thing can really start to burn out. Your first responders. It generates a lot of overtime. It creates concerns from supervisors about fatigue. And it does feel like we're being stretched very thin. So I just felt it was important to put that out there.
Thank you, Dave. Joel?
If nothing else.
And Brian?
I don't have anything additional.
Okay, Paula?
Alex went out in the mail yesterday. Three weeks from tonight, this time we will have unofficial election results.
Oh, very counting. Yeah, not that anyone's counting the days.
You know, I really want to credit the candidates, especially these guys, you know, Andrew and Devon. Um but all six candidates have come to each performance or or forum and. Very good. And I appreciate all that time. Cause I I know that you have to prepare, you know, for each of these events. They're they're all different and. Uh but I'm proud of you too. It's just been quite that process.
Thanks, Mo.
And I've been going to watching.
One more tomorrow night with a luck, we'll have twelve inches of snow.
Yeah. Sue goes to them. You and Gina's.
What's that?
You've been at many of the.
I've gone to the last two. I'm not gonna be able to go tomorrow. No offense, guys. I've I've heard you. I get it.
Thank y'all for coming this night. Yeah, yeah, thank you so much for attending. It it definitely does. Mean a lot to have you guys there and Paula, I think you have to get up early.
Yeah, good for you.
Yeah, Peter was there. Thank you. Peter was there.
Yeah, sorry, my wife's birthday was on the second one, so. That takes rest.
Yeah.
Another one tomorrow night.
Yeah.
I think I registered twice if somebody wants to go.
Are you good on?
Yeah. Allah, anything?
That's it, just the election.
Here. Uh yeah, I was just gonna say, you know, I mean, we're gonna be going over this uh next session, the um. Community Foundation Grants. Um we go through that process. I will say, it's very rewarding. It's great to see everything that's. Everybody's doing in the community, but just as a piece of advice, if you do have a full-time job, other commitments, I would not recommend doing it. No, it's all right. It's 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 justifiably so. It's a it's a significant commitment because you have to give a lot of. A lot of people doing hard work and asking for refunds and you, they deserve your attention, but it is not a light task.
I probably mischaracterized.
No, no, it's very rewarding. It just, it's, it's, uh I I'm just trying to give people a heads up. It is incredibly rewarding. I would recommend it if you can, but. Also recognize that if you have a busy schedule that you will be stretching and maybe not do the justice it deserves, which I think. That category. Um and uh, yeah, no, I think it's um really exciting to see the. Um the funding come through for the, from Peterson's office and um seeing that on the agenda for. Uh next session, like everything's kind of coming together, which is amazing. I just wanna thank Gina and for bringing that to the town's attention and really try to push that through. Um in a quick order so we can have that. Hopefully the red tape isn't too onerous, but.
We'll use it. It's just a matter of kind of where, right? Do we move it over to the childcare facility? Uh to move forward with the apartments themselves. So still wanna use it in Facebook. It's just better gonna how.
Yeah. Yeah, so it's exciting to have that and kind of the highlight, the, you know, the graph of. Uh water taps and growth, just like the fact that, you know, that congressional district is Jefferson County. And we have the lion's share of some of the funds coming out of that. It is kind of significant. Um kind of just highlights our community, kind of the needs that we have as we look to grow. Or as we grow, not to look to grow, I'm just saying it as growth happens, but trying to add commentary on growth. I'm fine.
Uh just two things. I echo what Sue brought up with um just opportunities for grants. Cause sometimes they do work out, which is great. Um and the other thing is I am, this isn't, I wouldn't say necessarily. So much town focused, but it was just interesting, went to the Guidestone um Agro Summit this past uh Friday and learned. Boatload. It was quite amazing, actually. Um and that's why I was interested with uh what you're talking about with Chicago Ranch, because a little bit about, you know, like buy up, dry up. And so, you know, hearing uh Robert uh Sikata, I think he was our keynote and. He is just talking about how when that stuff happens, that's great, whatever, but. It's ideal if the ground is isn't dried up before they do re-vedge because it's so much harder. And that's what's happened out of the county with with Hill Ranch or something, you know what I mean? So just things to think about as that process goes on. That's why I'm curious about the. For um but just, you know, ways that you can support farming and ag and. I sat through uh one of the workshops on state federal grants for rural clean energy. Um just opportunities that local farmers have, uh specifically for rural, but just. Grants were huge, just what they could provide to farmers that was updated um technology that was clean and smart, right? That would help them, their processing and try to make things more viable, because sometimes that's a thankless job. And so. Um but it was really interesting and I would encourage anybody to to go to that next year, wanting to come around again. So but um. But so that's it. Yeah.
Let's see, uh this this week, um. Several of us went to this newcomer collaborative, which was um. We were invited by the school district really to come to this and and so uh Brian went and. Uh Chief Morgan and Commander Garcia and myself. Um and it was a convening of people who are. Interested and potentially helpful to the number of immigrants uh that we're. You know, that we're we're getting in in Vienna Vista. And uh, you know, it's leading to diversity in our population. Um and uh we'd like to uh figure out ways in which these. Uh new people in our community can be accommodated. Um one of the big challenges, of course, is housing and. I'm not sure how that one's gonna work out. Um but uh school, that, you know, many of the children are not. English speakers uh to begin with, so uh they will be given, you know, special attention in their first year of. Of being in the schools um to learn English, but it puts a huge uh impact on the schools themselves. Um so just, uh you know, it's gonna be a little bit of a challenging time, but but um probably good for the diversity of. So that's all I have. Um so I think that's that's the end of our agenda. Don't leave anybody out. Max?
Jeff's still.
Carly? Jeff?
Yeah, you know, I don't have much to add, but but thanks for asking. I I feel like I didn't have much to say tonight, so I guess that's a good thing.
Yeah, okay. All right. Well, thank you. Thanks, everybody, for being here. Do I have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second, so we have Row and Cobb. Second, so we have Row and Cobb. All in favor? Anyone oppose? The motion caps, receding as a juror.